Welcome everyone to the Breaker Session, Louisville City Council for July 6, 2021. We have most of our council here in person. We have Lawrence on the line.
I don't see his phone number.
Okay, he may still be calling in. It's the only person we're visiting, right?
He's on there now.
Okay, so we have a full council. That's good. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the agenda and a consent agenda. We need a motion to approve.
So before you do that, why don't you go ahead and do the roll call to make sure we've got names of all the council members on the record that they're here.
Oh, sure, sure.
Tony can do that.
We're heading back on in.
Here.
Phil.
Here.
Andy.
Here.
Ellie.
Here.
Lawrence. Lawrence. Move it. Lawrence. That's his phone number. Maybe he's got no trouble. Are you calling?
Well, we can go ahead and do the poll. The rest of the council will accept.
He can hear Lauren. How come we can't?
You gonna call him? Well, he's on his phone.
Well. It's not muted.
Am I gonna call him?
I guess.
Press the text. If he's on his phone, press the text.
What'd you say?
If he's on his phone, he won't answer.
That's what I got.
Press the text maybe.
That's what I got.
Yep.
Can't he put it on hold? Can I call him? Can I call him?
Is the volume on, Tommy? Is the volume up?
Oh, I don't know. Yeah, it's off.
We're trying to hear you, but we cannot hear you.
Why don't you try calling back in?
Roger, why don't you say something? See if we can hear you. I'm gonna ask him. I can't hear him either. It's on my computer. I can't hear Roger either. Is it over here? Maybe I...
Do you see Roger up there, Tommy?
Roger is speaking. Did you see?
Thanks. Jonathan, maybe you've got some ideas?
Roger.
I can't hear anybody.
Go to the little arrow next to your mute, next to your speaker, click up, and then Audio Settings. You go on all the way at the bottom.
Oh.
Audio Settings, and then Test Speaker, Cable Input, Virtual Cable. Hit the Test Speaker button. Nothing. What speaker do you usually use? The one on...
I never change anything, so...
See, try seeing the system. Now hit Test Speaker.
Okay, Roger, can I hear you now?
Testing one, two.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Perfect.
How about Lauren?
Lauren? Oh, he's not on. I gotta admit, he's back here. How about now, Lauren? The one that starts talking will pop down there.
Uh...
I hear ya.
Oh, great.
Okay.
Can you hear me now, Bonnie?
Yep, I sure can.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Not only does KVH save...
No problem.
Not only does KVH save lives, it sometimes saves city council. Thank you. Do we have a motion on the agenda now?
Well, I disagree. I'll start again.
And move to the second.
I have one change of the agenda. I'd like to request, I just wanted an update on the community days and the events associated with that. I know there's a motion in a second, but if I could get a friendly amendment, I would appreciate it.
You don't need to. You can just report on it, right? You can have a report done here.
Okay, so do you want an amendment to the agenda to report on tourism? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, to report on the events for a community day, just what's going on the day of that Saturday.
Okay, we can change the agenda, or I can just address it in my comments under Report to City Administrator. Is that good now?
That sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the agenda and a consent agenda. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And the explanation will come just a little bit later, Lauren. The next item on the agenda is Presentations, and we have a presentation by KVH on the hospital bond proposal by Leslie Ebert. Leslie, Anne Johnson, Lewis.
We might be able to just run out to YouTube and grab it at that time. All right. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
We're getting there. We're almost there, but, and you guys, I don't know where I can... Can you see where you are? Where do you want me?
You're fine.
There we go. There's the video. Okay, so we are running the bond again. This is the third time. Last time, we were just short 178 votes, so we had a majority of the community. We had 57%. For a general obligation bond, you're required to have a supermajority at 60%. So, we know that the majority of the hospital district is supportive because they voted in November and said 57% of us are supportive of this, and so now we're just after that supermajority that's required. So, I'm gonna go through a presentation. Feel free to interrupt, you know, anytime, questions, happy to stop and answer. We really believe that strong healthcare leads to a strong community. I don't think I need to tell you that as a civic city council. It's in your strategic plan to support medical services. It's part of a strategy of a strong city, so we appreciate that support. You, I think most of you know me. I've been at the hospital district now for 12 years. I'm originally from Golden Dell. I grew up here, and I'm glad to be back and be part of making a difference for our community. So, we're gonna go ahead and get started. We're gonna run through this. Most of you probably know by now that the hospital was built in 1949. They had some Hill-Birdan funds, which were pretty common back then to fund new buildings, and the hospital district had just been formed. So, this is the groundbreaking that took place then. This is the actual original hospital building. So, what you might not know is we still have some clinical departments in the original 1949 building, being the acute care wing and our surgery department. So, we have some offices and some other things. You'll recognize the stack. The stack is still there. It's not used, but it's reinforced and won't fall over. But it's those two clinical departments that are in that original 1949 building that we really feel like we need to upgrade. So, that's where, you know, that's what this is all about. We're still able, you know, to provide all the care that we can, but we're limited in what we can do in the space. We did the addition in, with bonds that were approved in 2000, and so with those funds, we built the emergency department, diagnostic imaging. We were able to open up the space where the lab is now, because that was the old ER, add on the registration space. And then at that time, the lower level was a shell, just like we're proposing in our current bond, and we have completed that. So, with our new wellness and therapy center. So, significant growth in that, and I mean, really, we can't imagine if we hadn't done the emergency department now with the volumes that we have, diagnostic imaging, really in 2000. The approval rate was over 70% on that bond, so really a lot of community support. So, we've come a long way since then. That's actually a KVH nurse, so here we are today. Another piece of the project is once we are able to move out of the current acute care wing, the existing wing will be used for long-term care. So, as you know, there's no long-term care in the county. The building that we did have is now torn down, and hopefully there'll be something there again, but it's a huge need. The Department of Health has done a study, and we're actually, there's a need for 180 beds in Clicketac County, and I don't know if you good know this, but we have a big fat zero beds. So, with our critical access hospital license, we are able to swing our beds. So, with the new unit, we would have eight beds for acute care, and that would be 15 beds that could swing into long-term care. So, there is a huge need. We hear from family members all the time. They have to drive back and forth to the DOWs, to Yakima, wherever their loved ones go. So, we would be able to fulfill a real part of that need. We have to continue to invest in upgrades in technology. You can see on the screen, this is a CT upgrade that we just did in just this last year. That machine was just under a million dollars. So, it's a very important machine. If we didn't have a CT, we would be able to take a lot of the, you know, ambulance that comes in. They would just divert us and go to the DOWs, because you have to have a CT to diagnose a lot of things. So, it's really important that we stay current with technology. That's part of this project, too. Our surgery department can't do what they are capable of doing because they're limited in their space. They can't have the technology in there that they need to do higher acuity surgeries. So, it's super important. And it's really expensive. So, we, you know, we've been at this for a while. We had our most recent formal master plan in 2015. We identified the need to do acute care and surgery, and then the lower level we're keeping as a shell space. So, if you remember when we did this the first time, if you're here in 2019, we did have the both levels filled up with things. The bond didn't pass. We got, we set, you know, through several community feedback meetings, and we learned why, you know, some feedback, why the community wasn't supportive. We really listened. One was, we just want to support the essentials. So, we made that first floor shell space on the addition, so that that is, we took out the other things that we talked about doing there. We're just gonna do acute care and surgery. The other feedback was, you need to do something about your electronic health record and billing. And so, we were in the process of looking for a new system, and so we made that a priority. And just last week, on Thursday, we went live. It's a very lengthy process and to look for the right system that's affordable. So, we went through that process, and then once the board approved that system, it was, it's been 15 months since that approval for implementation and go live. So, we've done that. The third was, you need to stabilize the emergency room physicians and have access to more urgent or express care. So, we have a core group of 10 physicians that are from our region in the Gorge, Yakma area, and we opened express care last, it was a year ago in January. So, the things that we really heard consistently, we really feel like we've addressed. So, this is our current kind of maze of add-ons and what we have going on at the hospital, and we really have utilized all the space that we have. This is what the new addition would look like. So, we continued with the design project. In November, it was so close. The board felt like we should, you know, we need to continue this. The need has not gone away. The design development process takes a lengthy process. We wanted to continue it so we wouldn't lose time. So, we were able to come up with some renditions, and then we're gonna go into a video so you can really see, you know, what it's gonna look like. So...
I think we gotta go over to YouTube.
Okay.
We need to get things on this thing.
Welcome to the virtual tour of the proposed expansion in Clicketac Valley Health. The original hospital, constructed in 1949, has undergone a number of expansions over the last 73 years. The newest wing, constructed with funds from the bond that expired at the end of 2020, houses the emergency department, diagnostic imaging, and the wellness and therapy center. The proposed expansion will be at the southeast corner of the KVH campus. The two-story, 24,000-square-foot wing will face East Collins Drive and integrate seamlessly with the current facility next to the emergency department. Top floor will hold the acute care inpatient room unit and the surgery unit. The bottom floor will be dedicated space to meet future identified needs. Acute care and surgery are the only remaining services in the original construction. The other original outdated patient carriages have since been renovated into administrative offices. Patients, staff, and visitors will enter the top floor through a comfortable family and visitor waiting area located at the entrance to both the acute care inpatient unit and the surgery unit, keeping friends and family in close support. The acute care inpatient unit will have six single occupancy rooms with integrated hallway equipment areas and patient windows for viewing. There will also be two dual occupancy rooms with the capability of handling emergency response ICU patients and identified need during the COVID-19 pandemic. The nursing station will be located centrally for maximum efficiency and patient safety. Private rooms have become the standard of care as hospitals modernize. Their new rooms have been designed to better accommodate families, provide space for vast equipment and technology, and enhance infection prevention. The current acute care inpatient unit is part of the original 1949 construction. The inpatient rooms at KVH are all dual occupancy rooms, with up to four patients sharing the same bathroom. The north-facing rooms will face garden areas on the campus and provide a quiet natural environment, which aids in the healing process. Continuing down the main hallway from the family waiting area, the new surgery unit will be adjacent to the acute care unit. This unit will feature four pre- and post-op rooms with a centrally located nursing station allowing light of sight to each room. With this design, KVH will be able to increase its surgery volume while also becoming more efficient and increasing safety. Currently, KVH only has one pre- and post-op room for patients, which limits procedures. The two operating rooms have been designed with more space and upgraded technology necessary for more advanced surgeries, such as total knee and total hip replacements. KVH surgery has grown over the last three years, with orthopedics, podiatry, gynecology, and pain management now part of the program. The current ORs will be repurposed to grow wound care and infusion therapy services. The third pillar of care in this proposed expansion is providing long-term care at KVH, more commonly known as nursing home care. The current acute care inpatient unit will be renovated to meet those specific needs. Currently, Clicketac County has no long-term care beds, forcing families to place loved ones and facilities out of the area. Voters will have the opportunity to vote on this community bond investment on August 3, in a year where local healthcare and hospitals have never been more essential. For more information on the Strong Healthcare, Strong Community Bond campaign, please visit KVhealth.net. Thank you for supporting us so we can care for you.
So, a question always comes up, how are you gonna stack this? It's a great question. I think we're all aware workforce shortages in our community. So, we today submitted an application to the state to have a CNA program, a certified nursing assistant program. We, you know, we have a program in the DOWs of the Columbia-Gorge Community College, but it has some challenges, barriers. Once you get licensed in Oregon, it becomes difficult to get licensed. It takes time and expense to get licensed in Washington. I've been talking to Sharon Carter over at Senior Services for the last several years about what are we gonna do about CNAs. So, I'm really excited about the CNA class for this program because the long-term care, you know, 15 beds are primarily staffed with CNAs. There's, you know, there's some RN, they'll can support, but it's primarily CNAs. And so, that program will not only be good for a long-term care unit, it'll be good for the community, for senior services, providing care in the home for private caregivers to be able to, to get certified, and also a CNA program, many healthcare workers instead put in the door into a career in healthcare. So, we're really excited about that. The other challenge that we have in our current unit is there's not a lot of space, and there's challenges like the lip, you can see right here in the shower. In long-term care, patients don't shower in our rooms. They go to a central bathing area where they have a bath aid that helps them. So, we won't have the challenges of the showers, the limitations on the space, really for the safety of our staff, because it does get challenging to maneuver patients through areas. We will have two of the rooms in the new unit that are double occupancy rooms, and they will also be able to take care of, you know, bariatric patients. So, that will be, you know, more safe for our staff. Our staff is very involved in the design, which was really, which was really great for them to say, no, this is where the bathroom needs to be, and this is what we need to do. But we also put in a break room, some lockers, some showers. We don't currently have a lot of space for that, so when our police end up, you know, getting thrown up on or whatever and changing. So, there is some space for staff. It's really important for recruitment and retention as well. People wanna work in a nice environment and feel that they're, have this, where they need to deliver quality care, and it's relevant. So, so how are we, you know, how are we gonna pay for this? It's really, it's a community investment, and so as a critical access hospital, we have limited funds available, and so we're going to the community. This is very, very much the same as the last ask. It's at 68 cents per thousand. So, if you have a $150,000 home, as on the slide, the monthly investment is about $8.50. We do have a tax calculator on our website to calculate what that is. As I mentioned before, when the bond passed in 2000 by over 70%, it was actually at $1.29 per thousand. When we made that last payment in December of 2020, it was at 44 cents per thousand. So, I'm sure you're all aware of how when the property tax assessment value increases, the price per thousand goes down. So, when projects like the windmills come in, or perhaps the pump storage, what our community has originally approved then goes down, and those investments pay those portions of property taxes. So, that is a way it could go down. But in this proposal, it's priced at a 25-year bond, and that may, it takes to roughly 68 cents per thousand. And of course, these are all, you know, estimates. When you get the bond proposal, it says up to 30 years, because that's what's allowed by RCW, and then we can just look at it. 15.3 million. So, we're hoping that it's 20, comes in at 25 years, but the variables of where interest rates are at the time when you go to market, and, you know, maybe these sets of values may have changed at the time. You don't actually put the price per thousand in the proposal that's being approved. So, that is, you know, that's where we're at. Ballots are going in the mail, though, earlier than July 17, so that's next Saturday. So, they're coming out, and here to answer any of your questions.
Any other questions from the council? Or from our people in the council chamber?
I have a question. What is the construction period? And then when we, when would the facilities, all facilities be open, or is it gonna be in sections?
So, once approved in August, we'll continue the design development. It will be ready to go out to bid permitting, and that should be done by February. It's an estimated 15-month construction period, so it would be May of 2023. And then we would move into acute care and surgery. There's some work to do on the current acute care. You know, we have maintained it really well. There's only so much we can do as far as when we start to get into the walls too far, the state's gonna make us upgrade everything. And so, we have to be kind of careful about what we, what we do upgrade. So, as soon as, you know, we can get in there and make some modifications, then we'll start accepting long-term care patients.
Any other questions from the council, the conference? Steve? Johnson?
Yeah, I was curious what kind of prenatal and child delivery services are offered in the hospital now?
Yeah, great question. So, the hospital stopped doing OB in 2007. The last year, we did OB, we had 42 deliveries. So, we look at the market data about every other year to see, okay, where are we at? We need to have enough deliveries, and we can pull delivery data if it's, if the deliveries occur in the hospital, to see how many people within the hospital district service area delivered a baby. And there's, it's still under, it's still under 100. It was like 80 some the last year that I look. I didn't look at 2020 data. So, in order to do OB, you have to have providers who are on-call 24/7 to do that. You have a surgery crew that's on-call to do that. You have nurses that are specifically trained in OB and pediatrics. And so, it's a whole team that that takes, and there's a high risk associated with having a program. So, unfortunately, you see in quite a few small rural communities, Skylance in our same boat where they've stopped their OB program. If you look all around the state, there's only a couple rural communities still doing OB, and they have a high population. The demographics are different, where they have a younger population having a lot of babies. So, it's something that you need to do a lot of, 200 or 300 deliveries, to be good at, so that you're ready for when that one delivery goes bad. Unfortunately, malpractice insurance is really, really high for OB, and the more risk factors you have, the more liable that you are. So, but we continue to look at it. I'd love to be able to do OB. We had our Healing Garden dedication to Doctors Thompson, Garnett, and Pennington last week, and, I mean, truly, I think they delivered half the county when they were practicing out of family medicine, and it would be great to get back to that. But we have, whatever we do, we wanna do it well, and we wanna do it safely. So, safely for the patients. So, if a mom comes in into the emergency department in active labor, we will deliver that baby in the emergency department.
One a year?
Seems like each year, one or two or some, you know, just to do end up there. So, that's unfortunate answer that, yeah. But we do look at it. I mean, someday. Right now, the county demographics, 25% of Clicketac County is over the age of 65. So, that's, I think, Larry probably knows these numbers better, but the childbearing age percentage of our population is actually pretty low.
So, I was just curious, who actually gets to vote for you guys on this? Is it just the city of Golden Dell?
No.
Or the county residents as well?
The public hospital district. So, there's two hospital districts in Clicketac County. We're hospital district number one. Skylance is number two, and then there's a portion of the county on the east end that's not in either one. So, our district goes just down to the...
In a year where local healthcare and hospitals have never been more essential. For more information on the Strong Healthcare, Strong Community Bond Campaign, please visit KVHealth.net. Thank you for supporting us so we can care for you.
So a question always comes up, how are you going to stack this? It's a great question. I think we're all aware of workforce shortages in our community. So we today submitted an application to the state to have a CNA program, Certified Nursing Assistant Program. We have a program in the Dallas and Columbia Grove Community College, but it has some challenges, barriers. Once you get licensed in Oregon, it becomes difficult to get licensed. It takes time and expense to get licensed in Washington. I've been talking to Sharon Carter over at Senior Services for the last several years about what are we going to do about CNAs? So I'm really excited about the CNA class for this program because long-term care, 15 beds are primarily staffed with CNAs. There's some RN, Narcan support, but it's primarily CNAs. And so that program will not only be good for a long-term care unit, but it'll be good for the community, for senior services, providing care in the home for private caregivers to be able to get certified. And also, a CNA program, many healthcare workers instead put in the door into a career in healthcare. So we're really excited about that. The other challenge that we have in our current unit is there's not a lot of space and there's challenges like the lip, you can see right here in the shower. In long-term care, patients don't shower in our rooms. They go to a central bathing area where they have a bath aid that helps them. So we won't have the challenges of the showers, the limitations on the space, really for the safety of our staff because it does get challenging to maneuver patients through areas. We will have two of the rooms in the new unit that are double occupancy rooms, and they will also be able to take care of bariatric patients. So that will be more safe for our staff. Our staff is very involved in the design, which was really great for them to say, no, this is where the bathroom needs to be and this is what we need to do. But we also put in a break room, some lockers, some showers. We don't currently have a lot of space for that. So when our police end up getting thrown up on or whatever and changing. So there is some space for staff. It's really important for recruitment and retention as well. People want to work in a nice environment and feel that they have this work, they need to deliver quality care, and it's relevant. So how are we going to pay for this? It's really, it's a community investment. And so as a critical access hospital, we have limited funds available, and so we're going to the community. This is very much the same as the last ask. It's at $0.68 per thousand. So if you have a $150,000 home, as on the slide, the monthly investment is about $8.50. We do have a tax calculator on our website to calculate what that is. As I mentioned before, when the bond passed in 2000 by over 70%, it was actually at $1.29 per thousand. When we made that last payment in December of 2020, it was at $0.44 per thousand. So I'm sure you're all aware of how when the property tax assessment value increases, the price per thousand goes down. So when projects like the windmills come in, or perhaps the pump storage, what our community has originally approved then goes down, and those investments pay those portions of property taxes. So that is a way it could go down. But in this proposal, it's priced at a 25-year bond, and that may take to roughly $0.68 per thousand. And of course, these are all estimates. When you get the bond proposal, it says up to 30 years because that's what's allowed by RCW. And we can just look at it. $15.3 million. So we're hoping that it comes in at 25 years, but the variables of where interest rates are at the time when you go to market, and maybe these sets of values may have changed at the time. You don't actually put the price per thousand in the proposal that's being approved. So that is, that's where we're at. Ballots are going in the mail earlier than July 17th. So that's next Saturday. So they're coming out and here to answer any of your questions.
Part of the questions from the council or from our people in the council chamber.
I have a question. What is the construction period? And then when would the facilities, all facilities be open? Or is it going to be in sections?
So once approved in August. We'll continue the design development. It will be ready to go out to bid permitting, and that should be done by February. It's an estimated 15-month construction period. So it would be May of 2023. And then we would move into acute care and surgery. There's some work to do on the current acute care. We have maintained it really well. There's only so much we can do as far as when we start to get into the walls too far, the state's going to make us upgrade everything. And so we have to be kind of careful about what we do upgrade. So as soon as we can get in there and make some modifications, then we'll start accepting long-term care patients.
Any other questions from council, council members? Steve Johnston?
Yeah, I was curious what kind of prenatal and child delivery services are offered in the hospital now?
Yeah, great question. So the hospital stopped doing OB in 2007. The last year we did OB, we had 42 deliveries. So we look at the market data about every other year to see, okay, where are we at? We need to have enough deliveries, and we can pull delivery data if the deliveries occur in the hospital, to see how many people within the hospital district service area delivered a baby. And it's still under 100. It was like 80 some the last year that I looked. I didn't look at 2020 data. So in order to do OB, you have to have providers who are on-call 24/7 to do that. You have a surgery crew that's on-call to do that. You have nurses that are specifically trained in OB and pediatrics. And so it's a whole team that that takes, and there's a high risk associated with having a program. So unfortunately, you see in quite a few small rural communities, Skylance in our same boat where they've stopped their OB program. If you look all around the state, there's only a couple rural communities still doing OB, and they have a high population. The demographics are different where they have a younger population having a lot of babies. So it's something that you need to do a lot of, 200 or 300 deliveries, to be good at so that you're ready for when that one delivery goes bad. Unfortunately, malpractice insurance is really, really high for OB, and the more risk factors you have, the more liable that you are. But we continue to look at it. I'd love to be able to do OB. We had our Healing Garden dedication to Doctors Thompson Garnett and Pennington last week. And I mean truly, I think they delivered half the county when they were practicing out of family medicine. And it would be great to get back to that. But whatever we do, we want to do it well, and we want to do it safely. So safely for the patients. So if a mom comes in into the emergency department in active labor, we will deliver that baby in the emergency department.
One a year?
Seems like each year, one or two or some, just do end up there. So that's unfortunate answer that, yeah. But we do look at it. I mean, someday. Right now, the county demographics, 25% of Clickat County is over the age of 65. So that's, I think Larry probably knows these numbers better, but the childbearing age percentage of our population is actually pretty low. Yeah?
So I was just curious, who actually gets to vote for you guys on this? Is it just the city of Goldendale or county residents as well?
The public hospital district. So there's two hospital districts in Clickat County. We're hospital district number one, Skylance number two. And then there's a portion of the county on the east end that's not in either one. So our district goes just down to the edge of Glenwood, includes parts of Clickat, Wishram, Maryhill, kind of over to Rock Creek and up to the county line. So Goldendale, Centerville, Wishram, part of Clickat.
Are you working with county commissioners to get that out to those people as well?
Well, the county commissioners are supportive of healthcare in the community, but actively... They're actively... Oh, sorry. Yeah. So they're supportive of having medical services in the community. And that's kind of, they're publicly elected officials. So I mean, I'm sure they have their personal opinions, but that's kind of what they support the activities of the hospital. So as public entities, all of us, we can only share information during business hours. On our personal time, we can say, vote yes. You can be on the vote yes committee. But per RCW, we cannot actively engage in vote yes while we're working.
So anyone in the zone?
Yes.
Anyone within the hospital zone?
Yep, that's registered to vote.
Whether they're in the city limits or out.
Yep, city limits doesn't matter.
Able to cast a vote?
And I was going to ask, Larry, I don't know if you have a council member physician on the ballot. We might be the only thing on the ballot again. I was looking at who filed.
The way that our filing happened, we only see election for city council members in the November election.
So we do have to have the 40% validation, which is 40% of the last general election, which is about 2,200 votes. We were in the same position in August of 2019, and we did, we had about 800 people come out and vote. So we got the validation. So it's good to know, even with being the only thing on the ballot, that we'll get people to vote. That's important. You can have a super majority, but if you don't have the 40% validation, it's not a valid election. So, yeah.
One more question. So you mentioned that you guys applied for the CNA.
Yes.
Teaching with the state. Would that be? If this is approved, you guys would be able to do the CNA program? If not approved, would that program go away? And basically, if you guys did the CNA program, would that be open, for example, to high school students graduating just when you guys opened and need people? Or would your intention be to continue it down the road so that our students graduating in the county have accessibility to that and a whole wide world opens up to them?
So really, a lot of great questions. Once the state approves the program, and they'll approve the program. And I have worked for an organization before where we had a CNA program. We offered it three times a year. We needed CNAs in our organization, but we opened it up to the community as well. There was an tuition amount. We really tried to keep it just at the cost of the books and the teacher, the instructor. There's some clinical time that's required, so you have to actually have those clinical hours. But we would want to open it to the community. The whole idea is that this would be an investment of workforce development in the community and maybe even the county, where other folks come over to participate. I'd love to work with the schools. We do have to be careful about age. Once you start working in the hospital, you have to be 18. So if we could, we could work with a school for those 18-year-olds. And maybe we have students up for workplace, worksite learning. And so we'll definitely be trying to work with them and see if we can kind of capture them and get them excited about being in healthcare and maybe make a career in healthcare.
And this program's not dependent on the bond? We need CNAs, bond or no bond?
So then would the CNA program be funded in a different, not separate from this?
Separate from this.
So would that be another bond later down the road? Or it's already budgeted?
Yeah, we would develop, I mean, we would develop that program, come up with a cost, the average class size, eight to 10 students. Here's the cost, divide by the number of students, and have a set amount for tuition, help them through the class. I mean, it's up to the student to, they would get a certificate for completing the class. They would have to take the test to get their CNA license. Yeah.
Leslie, so you guys had the assisted living before. It wasn't cost-effective? So all those patients went away from their families and everything in return? What says you're not going to do that again?
Yeah, so assisted living was a different situation. We were down to 14 patients by the time we closed it. If you remember that, that was in 2009, so the market really crashed. There were a couple variables that happened with assisted living. The hospital didn't build the building, didn't have the debt, but it was all transferred to the hospital in 2007. So we started servicing the debt and the dynamics of being a critical access hospital and cost-based reimbursement. We had more costs being allocated out of the hospital into assisted living, which is fee schedule reimbursement. So there was a loss of about a half a million dollars by just operating it. So which you can't undo with the kind of reimbursement that we have. So we were paying the debt on a building that had 14 patients in it, and we were losing a half a million dollars. So I mean, we had to make a decision to do what was best for the community. And it was hard to say to the 14 families, we're going to have to. But to lose half a million dollars for 14 people versus what we could do in that space. And we have two full floors of medical office, providers on the complete first floor, complete second floor, which has been, we would not have been able to do in the building, you know, 711 East Collins, the old family medicine building. So we were able to kind of turn that into a really positive use of that space and maximize. I would love to see assisted living back here again, and if we could support it in some way. We just can't be the owner developer of it. We'll still have those costs allocated out. Under the current reimbursement methodologies, it doesn't work.
And this is going to be different?
It is different because they're under the critical access hospital license. We have 25 beds. We can't exceed that. And we can swing those beds between acute care and extended swing or custodial care, essentially long-term care. That's a special allowance for critical access hospitals. So the assisted living was not under that license. They couldn't be in that. That building doesn't meet hospital code requirements. So those wing beds still have to meet hospital code requirement. Space, assisted living building would never have met that. It was built as residential. Yeah. It's a great question. I don't want to take over your opinion.
No, no, you're fine. This is a very important issue, the bond is really important.
I do hope if you have additional questions, please ask us. We believe in this project. The need is not going away. We want to be able to continue to offer more services to the community. So.
Thank you. I hope you keep in mind, as far as people listening on Zoom or here in the room, how essential medical care is whether you're a teenager, a preschooler, or an elderly person. This is something that we've got to have. It's one of the most important aspects of quality of life and strong economic development in a community. We have tremendous help already from KVH. It's an incredible source of living wage jobs, not minimum wage jobs, and that's a big thing. And it's a genuine, recognized job generator. Because I'm old, that's why I really watch this hospital, and I really like it. I hope I don't ever use it, but that'll help. Thank you, Leslie, and thank you, Jonathan. Appreciate your presentation. The next item on the agenda is department reports. And we'll begin with Noah Hall, our chief of the fire department.
Yeah, so I don't have too much to report. I'll report on the Fourth of July. It was pretty quiet in the aspect of no fires. I know there's a lot of things going on around town, but there was no fires. We did have two fire trucks out patrolling and at the ready and with, I believe, two other crews ready to go. So everything was successful on the Fourth of July.
Very successful, thank you. Jay Goldenell-Pelee?
I just got a few items. Law enforcement's been in the news quite a bit ever since last year, and there's been a lot of changes. And there's been a lot of negativity towards law enforcement. Everybody agreed, but there's a lot of supporters. And Mark Bryan, who's a paramedic for the ambulance service, reached out to me, requested a call to pass on some information, which resulted in me issuing a letter of appreciation for all officers at GPD because he had something good to say about every single one of them. So I'd like to read that letter.
Thank you.
So you can see what Mark was talking about. "It's with great pleasure and appreciation to pass on the information I received from Mark Bryan of the ambulance services on 6/29/21. Mark praised all the officers of the Goldendale Police Department for their assistance on medical calls. I was also told officers go above and beyond with assisting on medical calls. Officers jump right in and help, and very professional and courteous to medical staff and the patient. Mark commented his staff continually comes to him and tells him GPD is doing great work and are very helpful with loading patients on the gurney, loading into the ambulance, carrying medical bags, and doing all that without having to be asked for the help." "In the recent past, there have been multiple drug overdoses in Goldendale, in the area just outside of Goldendale, in which Narcan had to be administered to save the life of the person overdosing on drugs. Mark said GPD officers were first on scene on most of the emergencies, and officers administered Narcan before the medics were able to arrive. Mark added, GPD was an outstanding department, with well-trained professional officers, and wanted to pass on his great appreciation for all officers at the Goldendale Police Department. I added at the end, as your chief, I greatly appreciate each of you, and I believe we have a great team of officers at Goldendale PD. A copy of this letter will be placed in your file." One of the things that Mark noted too on the Narcan being administered was one case involving Sergeant Lucutaro. If he wouldn't have administered the Narcan, Mark says that person would have definitely died. So, good there. Incidents on July 4th were none for law enforcement, which was good. I didn't hear any sirens, that was even better. Then, the only thing I have to add is, let's see, what was it? Monday, we had an incident up at Simcoe in Roosevelt that was, officers responded to a very potential deadly situation. It was a domestic violence call, adult male and female arguing. When officers arrived, the male started walking away. He was definitely assessed, he was assessed by Sergeant Smith and found to be, he was under crisis, right? And he was having a bad time. Then, he noticed there was a handgun sticking out of the pocket. Okay? Sergeant Smith and Officer Stelges were able to contain and de-escalate the situation. Sergeant Smith was able to get that person in crisis to calm down enough. He never reached for the gun, which was later found to be loaded and cocked, ready to go. The individual followed Sergeant Smith's direction, actually unbuttoned or undone his belt to his shorts. He was wearing underwear, let him drop with the gun in the pocket, and he stepped out of it and walked over to the church parking lot. And that's where we were able to get him isolated, get the gun secure. Okay, we called medics to the scene, and we notified comprehensive mental health. One thing I want to stress is that this situation in a fraction of a second could have gone completely different. Excuse me. Officers did great under a very stressful situation, but de-escalation training for critical incidents kicked in, and we had a great turnout. The individual went to the hospital, and comprehensive mental health came in later on, and eventually was released and allowed to go home, which he was just a passer through. This was an incident. They just stopped in, and that's where the incident took place. They live in Idaho. So it was a great turnout, and that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. I want to point out one thing. I was sitting right there picking up a pizza and saw all this take place. I had no idea there was a gun cocked and ready to kill somebody, not necessarily anybody that you would expect. These things happen all the time now in this whole country. And we have to be aware of the real danger our police officers are in. They don't just get tough days. Every day is pretty tough, and it's pretty dangerous for them. Same for our volunteer fire department. They lay their life out there so that you're safe, you're healthy, and that we have abilities to avoid this type of emergency. And even it could have been an absolute tragedy. And we had officers that were not prepared or had the skills and the training to do what he was able to do. This is a very important thing. You could have been at the pizza place. You probably get gas, or you may go by the store there, and you don't even necessarily know some of the dangers that we go through as we go around this community. And thank goodness, we have officers such as we have and firefighters as well.
Sergeant Smith also radio dispatched and had him start notifying the local businesses that it was shut down. But one thing to add is the individual did say, I want to die. So it ended well.
It's a pretty serious statement. Thank you. Public Works, do you have, or is Doug on the line for anything?
No.
Okay. We'll go on now to council business, and Larry's going to lay out the program for working out the interviews for our council applicants. And Larry?
First of all, I believe that the council had at the last meeting decided to go ahead and do the interviews of the people that were still looking to fill the two vacancies. So is that still the case? Any changes in that recommendation? Okay. Are you still, we've done the interview process before. And in your packets, you have a sample of some interview questions that we could use for the council members that we're interviewing tonight. What we've done in the past also is we've had each one of the council members ask a question. Sometimes we've done where the mayor just kind of does an interview and follows these questions. But the thing to remember is we want them to be, all the questions to be similar so that the process is fair, we ask the same questions on the same individuals. So really, there's two choices really right now. One, do you want the mayor to kind of do the interview and utilize these questions? Or do you each want to ask a question? Thoughts on that?
Same questions, right?
Same questions. Can you do that, Mayor?
Yeah, I can do that. I can do that.
Are you comfortable with all those questions?
Yes, I've gone through them a number of times. And if a council member feels they want to ask particular questions, please let me know.
Okay, so then the process for that interview process is we have pre-decided the order and the order of the council members to be interviewed. They are in the same order from which we receive their letter of interest. Steve Johnston will be first. I should mention before we get into this, we actually have two physicians we're asking you to fill. And so keep that in mind when we get down to the voting part. So we will start with Steve Johnston. The second one will be Dave Jones, Deon Wheeler, Darlene Williamson, and Lori Lyon. So Steve will be up first, and I will take the other four so they don't have the benefit of hearing his answers into the mayor's office.
Okay.
And I'll come get you when it's your turn.
And there's cases on the table, help yourself.
Transition here.
Steve, probably the most comfortable place to be up at the lectern, I think. The first one is to just describe your educational background and your work experience and your community service activities.
Actually, I'm not here to interview, but I would like to take the opportunity to clarify my position regarding a comment that I made at previous council meeting. To the extent of an opinion regarding appointment as opposed to reelection. I think the statement, it seems to have created a certain degree of confusion, misunderstanding and gridlock. And for this, I sincerely apologize. I recognize that the council was confronted with an unprecedented situation regarding the vacating of such a large number of council physicians in a short period of time and they had no choice but to follow existing protocol to mitigate the situation. Relative to this current situation, I would like the council to know that would be a privilege for me to once again serve on the city council even through this method, as was exercised with the previous vacancy. Furthermore, under these particular circumstances, I believe my appointment position that I will assume regardless would be the most logical, common sense and time-efficient approach to re-establishing some continuity to the council. With due respect to anyone that desires to serve on the council, to needlessly appoint someone temporarily in short term to a position that they can't possibly keep would not be fair to that person and would be a disservice to the citizens of the community. I think it would be prudent to address this particular issue first so as to allow a more complete council to proceed with business at hand. With that being said, I respectfully turn the floor back over to the council.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions or comments from Steve Johnston?
So, just to clarify, what I have about the questions?
Not for Steve, I don't believe he has to go through it. He's running out of clothes, but doesn't want to be appointed, he wants to be elected, which is everybody else.
Well, now, yeah, that was the...
That's probably my confusion.
That was the confusion, yes. And that's why I wanted to clear the air regarding that. Like I said here, no, under the circumstances, I think it would be prudent and most effective to follow the protocol that you already have and I'm good with that.
Good.
It would serve, I believe it would serve the council and the city in the most efficient way. Again, like I say, I apologize for the confusion and the misunderstanding. I made a comment, an opinion, the wrong one at the wrong time.
Still following that.
I do apologize.
So now, do we go through questions or do we...
It's really totally up to you. Steve has already applied for candidacy.
I will soon.
And he's running out of votes for the position number seven.
Right, well, my, my thing would be to step off through the appointment process that we have set in place because it would not be fair for the other individuals actually showing interest. This is kind of unprecedented to have this many people show interest in the council. So I would like to continue to go ahead and with the selection process.
Okay, so you would like him to go ahead and answer the questions?
If you would like to participate in that, if not, we will take his statement as part of the interview and move forward.
This doesn't make any sense, to be honest.
So, do you want to have him interview you or not?
Why should I interview for a position that I am likely to assume regardless?
So I would take that as he just doesn't want to go through the questioning and then we can move forward with the next application.
All right.
It's fine, it's your option.
Turn the floor and I have a comment if I...
Go ahead.
I think the message was clear previously and it's a good point that Steve made about appointed positions and positions that run without opposition. And I think regardless of what happens, I think it could be incumbent and its responsibility that there's a body of people that have interest in serving on city council, you know, and if Steve wins that uncontested position, that he open that up to other folks applying for appointment to his position now that we have our larger group interested serving for the community. You know, anyone that wants to question the efficacy and the validity of a position that was uncontested should definitely be open to it being contested for a position on city council. And so in that respect, one, I would like to say that I think if there is value in people applying to being appointed for a short term so they have some experience and maybe those people get a little experience during a few months' time, write something different and also gain some experience, maybe they want to break back and run for elections in the future. And two, you know, if Steve is elected in November, as he will be in an uncontested position, that he has the ability to stand behind his word and open his position up to appointment by a group of people that are interested in serving his position, if he's willing to do so.
May I?
Certainly, Steve, certainly.
That's turning this process into a rehearsal or a training session and it's, I mean, I have to agree that it would give a person a certain amount of education.
Excuse me, I think Steve turned the floor over to council and so tells council it's disgusting.
See you in November?
Give the comments.
So, clarification?
Sure.
And his last comment, does he withdraw his name from this since he's leaving?
From the short-term appointment, no.
So that is, that is his withdrawal from the short-term appointment possibility.
That's really up to you guys whether you want to withdraw his name or not. As far as I'm concerned, his name is still valid.
I'm kind of confused because he said, he said, "See you in November," so...
Oh, I didn't hear that comment.
Yeah, he said, "I'll see you guys in November," which is when the election is. So is that a withdrawal of his name?
Well...
My personal opinion, he decided to not answer questions and go through the process and I think we should withdraw his name or if we just leave his name on...
It's really up to the council whether you feel he dropped out by making that statement.
Yeah, I'm just confused, so I guess we walk out, so...
Leave his name and just move forward with the... I say we just move on to the next person?
Okay.
Okay. Let's run through some of the questions I'm intending to ask. Besides, I want an educational background and work experience. The second, third, fourth, fifth are all questions I think we need to discuss. But I'd like to have maybe three good and pointed questions that you want to ask.
Number seven is to be asked.
Yep.
What's number seven?
How do you plan to facilitate or foster economic growth and development in Goldendale?
Okay.
Very important. Number five, I think, is one we want to use. What are the two highest priorities or issues that you believe the city needs to address? How would you propose to address these issues? If that's an agreement, we can ask that. We can talk about assets and strengths that they bring to the city council or your vision for the city and the community. And I think people looking towards what's going to be the future, that's more important even than assets and strengths. Is that all right?
I agree.
All right. Possibly, why are you interested in serving and what do you hope to accomplish? It's fine to ask that, I don't know if we need more than those three or four.
And I don't think six would apply because it is a short term.
Yes, it's primarily, one is short-term and one is longer-term, yes.
Possibly, because Kevin could, if he comes back to town, if he wins election, comes back to town, he could be...
That's an asset.
Actually, no.
No, okay.
I am in contact with Brandon.
Oh, okay, so, okay.
He formally resigned because that's, that was what we had to figure out with him, what he wanted.
So I have a question on the, on the position numbers. So Steve is filed for position seven and so we were looking for an appointment for position five. And going through the letters, there's only two of them that actually specifically mentioned position five. So, I'm kind of, you know, in agreeance with Steve that he's filed for position seven and it would be a very short-term appointment.
Yeah, that would be, that's exactly it.
Now he's walked out, we can't give him the old, get on him tonight.
Well, I, I think we should interview each position. I don't know how we want to determine how we pick, do we want to do the interview pick for the number five and then number seven or, no, hold on. What's Steve's number, is number seven?
Steve's?
That's the one he's running for? And number five is the one that was Kevin's, correct?
Correct, yes.
And the term for, for position five is the full term?
The term for position five is till December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three.
So that's, that's a full term at city councils, is that?
No, it's...
It would be to the next...
Full term is four years.
Okay, yeah, okay.
This is a short, what's your...
Short and full.
Because since you appointed a person to that position, they have to run again for election in the next general election, which is December or which is the year of two thousand and twenty-three.
Right.
Whereas the other two, Ellie's position, Steve's position, they will all wait until July.
I think we still have to give them the vote after the election. Won't say two, but we'll check it together.
Okay, so are we ready?
Yes.
Did the interview process?
Yep.
Leslie Johnson, if this is torturous, it's okay, you can...
Better than Netflix.
Let's hope not.
Come to these, it's deep entertainment. Okay. Hey.
Hello.
Glad to have you here.
Thanks. A little nervous, but...
Oh, don't be.
First job interview I've had since I was sixteen years old.
You've worked at Century Grocery for thirty years, is that right?
Yeah, just about.
Right.
Yeah.
Very strong person in the, in the community too.
Thanks.
And what, the first question is, and the reason I'm asking these is because these other guys said, "Well, let that guy ask."
Yeah, yeah.
But if you could just briefly describe your educational background, your work experience, we've already talked a little bit about, and your community service activities.
Sure, sure. So I had all my schooling here in Goldendale, from kindergarten through high school. Graduated in ninety-three. And I've been a local grocer here for about thirty years, like I said. And I have experienced about every job that you can think of in a grocery store, including management duties and management decisions. It's my first interview I've had ever, but I've conducted about, oh, two, three hundred interviews, I reckon. So, I'm on the other end here.
You want to give us some assessment if this is over?
A lot of people have interviewed, I'm on camera. Hey, sorry. Okay, so, yeah, I was an active member of the Goldendale J.C.'s for about fifteen, sixteen years. When I was with the J.C.'s, I went to all the meetings and I helped to organize and work on many events, including all the demolition derbies and the canned food drives, the pump pass and kit competitions for the children. I learned that when a kid kicks a football, you don't know where that's going to go at all. Anyways, and we, we did that community service awards, banquets and organized parades and I worked at the county fair beer gardens and all the various community days events, just really had a good time with the J.C.'s and learned a lot there, you know? I spent several years working at the fair barbecue also, grilling the meat. If you ever had the fair barbecue?
Yes.
I was in on that.
That was good, too.
Yeah, thanks. In the mid-nineties, I worked with an organization called Rock the Vote. We set up voter registration booths at different concerts and events, including the community days one year. We talked to people about the importance of voting and registering people to vote there. I got all-access passes at concerts for doing that. Really good times. I'm currently on the citizens advisory board for the career and technical education department at the high school. It's a mouthful, but we need a few times a year to go over their budget and approve curriculum for that area of the high school. That was the end of it, what I had.
Well, it's good, thank you. Another question that the council decided we ought to ask is, what is your vision for our city and community? And as a grocer, you're really involved in this city.
You're skipping number four?
Four, yes.
Okay.
Good, reflection's everything.
I like to write stuff down because in case I forget what I, and I didn't know how nervous I would be and need to be able to read a little bit, you know? Anyways, yeah, the vision for the city, you know, I don't know how much of a visionary I am, but I want to live in a place where people can feel safe letting their kids walk to school. You know, I hope they feel that way now, but that's what I want. A place where someone can get a good education and make a good living and be proud of their community. And you know, I just like the small stuff. I appreciate small things, you know, like not having to deal with traffic jams every day and just small things like people feeling uncomfortable to hang out in front of Dr. Ogden's office and have jam sessions every Monday. My dad's one of them. Anyways, yeah, that's all I had to say about that for now.
Super, thank you. What would you say are your two highest priorities and are the issues that you believe the city needs to address? And what would you propose to address these, how would you propose to address them?
Okay, yeah, I was prepared for that question.
Very good.
Anyways, you know, the number one, not, not the number one thing, but one thing I hear constantly is, there seems to be a housing shortage, you know? I just, I work in a grocery store and then I see on the internet sometimes people are always looking for a place to rent that's affordable and, you know, you can have all the economic development that you want and stuff, but that there's not enough places for people to live. So I don't know what the answer to that is. You know, I'm not afraid to say I don't know what an answer is, but I see the need there and, you know, I could get on board with that. The number two thing I always want to talk about, and I've talked to several police officers, including Chief Hunzaker just today, about the opioid and narcotic problems that's going on, not just here, but everywhere, but, you know, drugs like heroin and meth and fentanyl destroying lives and a potential for a bad epidemic. It's already on us. And, you know, one officer told me that he has had to administer that Narcan five times just in the short time that they've carried that. You know, that's the drug that they use to bring someone back to life. Chief Hunzaker was talking about it earlier. They use that drug to bring people back to life, you know? Another officer told me that he has entered houses where some of these drugs are present and he's become ill from being exposed to them. That fentanyl can affect you just by touching your skin.
And it's quick.
Right, and, you know, we got to support our police officers and other first responders and making sure they have whatever they need for their safety. That's a big safety hazard, having our police officers have to be exposed to that on a regular... So I don't know what the answer is, you know, we got to work with the police officers and give them all the support we can facing a big, they got to be prepared before it gets real bad. You know, I don't know what it's gas masks or hazmat suits, I don't know, but we owe it to them, you know? You know, I don't know what it's gas masks or hazmat suits, I don't know, but we owe it to them, you know? And I owe them. You know, during my years in the grocery store, I've had to call the police for help hundreds of times. And lots of them 911 calls I've had to make. And the average response time is about a minute. You know, I really appreciate that. You know, you don't know how bad you really need a police officer until you really need a police officer, you know? And I, I've been in that situation many times. And, you know, I, I can't tell you how glad I am that we have such a good police force that you can count on. And man, every time I've had any interaction with every officer that we have, it's been that you know they're there to help you out.
Very good.
And I don't know, I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. That starts from the top.
Thank you, thank you. The last one, how do you plan to facilitate or foster economic development? Economic growth and development in Goldendale?
All right, yeah.
This is Lauren Baker. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Dave Ward to City Council.
I don't get to vote, Lauren.
Thank you. So, yeah, okay, good question. Now, I had talked about a few things on question number six, and I'm going to go over. Let me see where I was. Number seven. We're on question number seven now. Okay. Yeah, so I would support the city's economic development plan as recommended by the Economic Development Committee, namely encouraging local industries to expand and attract new industries to the community, you know, by way of the industrial park space. I know we've been trying to do that for years, but, you know, whatever, whatever we could do, I know it's being done, but whatever we could do to pay and teach people. We got land for the taking up there, buildings, we got water. You know, we got, we got what people need to have a, have good industry there. You know, the other thing I just want to talk about a little bit when it comes to that is a huge deal is oh, I have something I want to talk about the firefighters. Anyway, is that pump storage energy project. I've been looking into that and reading about that a little bit. It said that we, they might be expected to create over 3,000 jobs during that. That could be the largest contribution to economic growth that this Goldendale's ever seen in my lifetime. And so I'm ready to learn more about that and be prepared. You know, it's not a sure thing, I know, but hey, we got to be prepared. 3,000 jobs, well, that's going to, that's going to mean big things for Goldendale, if it happens. And as far as I can tell, that's something to get on board with. I don't have all the facts about that. I'm not totally educated on the pros and cons of it, but everything I've read so far sounds like it's great. So, yeah, you know, one thing I was wanting to add because it was on my question five of a priority is I was talking to, the other thing I really support is the local firefighters and I was talking to a firefighter last week, Steve Randall, and he was telling me, hey, we've got a real need for more volunteers, you know? We're getting short on people, it seems like. And so, you know, I think anything the council can do to really support the volunteer fire department and getting new recruits in there, and that, that's a must, priority. Priority firefighters, priority is police and public works, you know?
Exactly.
Taking care of our water and our infrastructure. It's a common sense stuff that we have to have, you know? And everything else comes together if you have the basic common sense stuff and you take care of your people that work for you in all those departments and, you know, that's what I'd be supportive of.
Very good. Thank you. I don't have anything else. Does the council have any additional questions that you want to ask?
John's line.
Excellent. Interview.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
You can stay in here.
Okay.
If you'd like.
Oh, thank you.
I'm still driving.
Drink water though. Do that, that's all right. Just get something. Maybe a water.
Hello, Phineas.
Hello.
The council's decided on last questions, but they picked them out, so. And the first would be just to describe your educational background, your work experience, and your community service.
Okay. Try to keep this short. I have a few notes here just to help me. Okay, so I am a Goldendale High School graduate, class of 1998. For further education in 1999, I attended the Aston Center of Natural Therapeutics and was granted after one year of study, my license to practice massage therapy. And from that point, in 2000 to 2005, I was the owner and operator of a company called Sublime Touch Therapy. From 2005 to 2012, I acquired a position of head sales supervisor and event coordinator manager for a company called First Esprit de Cor. The company held military contracts with morale, welfare and recreation, if you're familiar, MWR. We provided millions of dollars a year to assist MWR. It provided many benefits to our troops and their families for the Navy, Marine Corps, Army and Coast Guard. In this position, I was in charge of multiple sales teams across the US in San Diego, Virginia, in Illinois and Florida. Also, for a greater part of that decade, I coordinated and facilitated multiple events across the US at multiple military installations as well as onboard Navy vessels during deployments overseas in active war zones off the coast of Afghanistan. We were there again to help induce pride for country and to show them that it's not all just that, sometimes we do need personal interaction. So after I finished with that job, I came back here to the Northwest. So from 2013 to 2016, I was self-employed as a freelancer. During that time, I held many positions. Some were odd jobs, internet jobs. I did creative content writing for websites. I did on pre and post concert preparation. So we, for Maryhill, we did prep for the concerts and broke them all down. In-home childcare as a nanny. I also did animal care services, house sitting services, maid and housekeeping services. I did have a small office here in town for a year over by Monkey Shines, trying to do Reiki energy therapy. It didn't work out too well for the community, but I still believe in it and I think it's very important. Part of who I am. I also was an independent contractor for services as well. So from 2017 to present day, I am, have been the owner and operator of a janitorial cleaning company called Motivations. We are an equal friendly cleaning company. I use non-toxic and non-chemical products and they are high quality. So I take a lot of pride in how we service our businesses. I do have about five to seven employees at any given time, part-time employees. And we maintain sites in Washington, Oregon and in Montana. My company is registered with the Goldendale High School as an employer for student workforce programs, enabling high school students to participate in career development and learn specific trade skills. My volunteer work includes, I've been secretary of the Lobo Kiwanis Club for, well, starting in 2017, so it's been about four years now plus. So with the exception of 2020, due to my business expansion and the pandemic, I had to take on an assistant secretary in order to maintain the position. Activities with Kiwanis included, are include, include but are not limited to fundraising, booth setup at local events to provide community, the communities used with books. We also do volunteering at the Methodist Church for the soup kitchen. We do roadside debris pickup, coordinating events with the high school so that they can get their credits for volunteering. We put out flags each month in recognition of holidays and patriotism. I volunteer for a few select businesses and I have also volunteered for local radio stations, food banks. I volunteer my time to residents in the community. I'm involved in neighborhood watch. I also volunteer at Goldendale, I've also volunteered at the Goldendale Observatory and the Chamber of Commerce. So.
That's good. A real, real work. Great. Thank you, Phineas, nice to have you in our community. The next question is, what is your vision for our city and community?
That's a really good one. So my vision for the Golden, for the city of Goldendale and for the community starts with my desire to bring an even stronger heartbeat to the city and by encouraging younger people to become more actively engaged throughout the community. My vision also includes pursuing a council platform that really energizes our citizens and encourages them to be more in communication. Working together with the Clickatap County Commissioners as a whole community, I believe that this will increase the city's understanding of local businesses, farmers, families and individuals. And it's going to provide deeper insights for all of us so that we can really meet the diverse needs of our citizens. So also, I truly wish to see this town continually increase in its shine because it is a beautiful gem. I always call it the diamond in the rough. I would love to see the pulse and the vibe of this town transcend its current state into an even greater one.
Thank you, thank you. The next question is, one of the two highest priorities and the issues you believe the city needs to address? And how would you propose addressing these?
That wasn't, that was kind of a tough one, but I had to pick two. So the top two that came to my mind when I sat and pondered this question, it's my understanding that several city codes need to be addressed. For example, building codes. So to address these issues, I would personally conduct extensive research and work together as a team with the council to update, terminate or amend specific city codes that are inhibiting or negatively affecting Goldendale's residents. Not just within the city, but outside the city, and that's where the county commissioners come into those things too. But I, I know that, you know, like the hospital was saying, there's zones. Right? And sometimes those are outside and when there's, and people are still affected by them. So if there's anything that we can do for those people, that means a lot. So these updates, terminations, amendments should reflect the current state and federal legislation and include a fundamental effective, or include any fundamental effective discoveries in modern development and sustainable living. In congruence, certain city ordinances should also be reviewed and updated, terminated or amended to reflect more modern day lifestyles and accommodate local businesses and citizens of Goldendale. The second most important issue I believe the city faces is that we really don't have any type of recovery facilities for a large number of our citizens that do struggle with drug and alcohol addiction. To address this issue, I would utilize state grants and state or federal grants to do a startup or, or startup loans to do two single-sex adult Oxford houses. These types of funds do pay for the entire building of these homes. And contracting with the O H I to receive the support and the trained outreach workers who start new Oxford houses. These houses will provide the necessary tools for reintegration back into being a healthy member of society and a much needed assistance for more complete recovery. I truly believe that this will make a difference for the entire community.
Thank you, thank you. Well, there's next to the last question. How do you plan to facilitate or foster economic development and growth in Goldendale through serving in City Council?
So I believe that development is vital to our economic growth. In order to facilitate a new development, we, kind of going back to the first question, we, we do need to go back and revisit the city codes.
Yeah.
And the ordinances to make the necessary updates, terminations or amendments to accommodate the citizens. So, you know, there are people that wish to refurbish homes, there are people that want to build new homes. As long as that we can accommodate both aspects, I think that's very important. I would also seek out any available grants or federal funds that would further assist any entrepreneurs who want to remodel any of the buildings down on Main Street. Because as we all know, those, a lot of those buildings are in dire need of interior and exterior excavation and repair, and it's almost not worth anybody buying them. If you're buying it for, you know, a certain X amount, you're going to spend, if not more than that, on trying to fix it. So anything we can do to support that, amazing. I would facilitate new economic growth by, by encouraging new developments like apartment complexes and subdivisions as well. Yeah, any housing developments, subdivisions, anything that I can do to possibly support those efforts, I would want to be part of. I would also recommend the City Council and to the city planner that we may consider extending our city limits a bit for this growth or to facilitate the growth, as well as possibly adding new sewage and water lines to also facilitate this growth.
Very good, thank you. The last one is, do you have any questions for the council?
Um, I guess the only two questions I could really think of was what kind of training, if, if I do get accepted, what kind of training should I expect to get?
In particular, Association of Washington Cities provides special training for new city council members, new mayors, and anybody else of that same two offices that want training. And we have not had it last year because of COVID, so that's starting to come back in, so that would be what would be provided. And there's certain do's and don'ts that help a council.
And there's certain do's and don'ts that help a council member that's just started out to know what works and what might better avoid. And there's more things on legal issues or state requirements that are clear to people.
And yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Any?
You can stay in here.
Step out for a minute. If we think about a two-minute break.
Okay.
Sure.
They're kissing softly.
I don't have to answer questions.
I'll probably wait about five minutes.
I look too late.
We can leave without her.
No, I think I hear a call.
Yeah, okay. I think you have some questions for them.
They're just getting around to it.
It's like a bad one. They're going to wait the next one. That's a weird one.
See you guys on the road.
Just pull it out.
Thank you, my girl.
They'll be used for them.
I don't want to stay at home all night.
I don't wait that long. I don't wait for you.
I hate the job I'm having. I love kids.
It's definitely two experiences.
I was born when I started my school.
Hey, you liking it so far?
Cool, I guess.
This is unusual.
We have already two students now. We started seven.
I think the ten years that I've been on council have lasted three or four years. We've had to do interviews for the first, like, six years. Neither of them has been yours.
I have a dad and a mom.
Who's your folks?
My dad's Ted McGill.
Yeah.
And my mom is Tom.
I'm working on year twenty-four.
How many years do you need to do?
I remember with Gill's. I want to go more for the May of twenty-three. I'll put me at twenty-five.
There you go. You're going to go fishing a lot after that, right?
Yes.
There you go. You have been fishing, right?
I can't do the work from arms and a cast.
Aren't we back? Oh, no, Larry. No, Larry. Oh, he's getting.
I think he's going good early.
He's getting somebody. He's supposed to be getting somebody.
She was standing outside, but I'm coming down. I have my office and I have over there.
I'll see where he's at. So the hurry comes.
All right.
That didn't work out very well.
Makes a lot of guys.
Didn't match him.
He was the right person.
Yeah. He was seeing if the mayor was ready, I guess.
Don't you mind if I go in six o'clock in the morning? I appreciate it.
I'll guard your purse.
You guard that.
What's in it?
Nothing. You can have it, you want.
Hi. Do you want to give a description of your educational background, your work experience, and your community service activities?
So my name's Darlene Williamson. And so I worked at KPH for a lot of years and rescue seven, ambulance. I'm now per diem down in White Salmon at the hospital down there. And I have probably volunteered on anything that there was in Golden Dale ever. And I own a bar downtown. So what else?
That's it. That's good. What is your vision for our city and community? And as a businessperson, you've got a...
I think we need more economic growth, that's for sure. I think we need to do a little cleaning up downtown too, down Main Street. You know, so it can be kind of icky. The airport, the project there, that's a good thing, I think. I think that's a real good thing. I think we need that. I don't know. I mean, you know, I've lived here all my life. I want what's best for Golden Dale.
Exactly. Thank you. I'm going to go on to the next one. What are the two highest priorities or the issues that you believe the city needs to address? And how do you propose to address these issues?
So I think, like I said, the airport project is a good one. And the economic growth is a good one. You guys are already doing the airport project, so that's already well underway, right? And good. You're doing that right. And, you know, I think, like I said, I think the downtown area needs to, you know, spruce it up. I don't come with any, anything to fix that yet. I'd have to, you know, talk, listen, learn, and then figure it out. I was like, oh. But usually, if I come to Larry with a problem, I come with a solution too. So, you know.
That's a big help.
It is. He appreciates it.
I'll go on to the next question now. How do you plan to facilitate or foster this economic development, growth, and development in our city? Anything in particular different from what's going on now?
No, like I said, I, you know, I have to do some research and ask, listen, talk, and just kind of learn as I went. So, yeah.
Good, clear. Very direct. Do you have any questions for the council?
I don't, at all.
I could give you a few.
Yeah, yeah. Give me a while. No, is that it?
That's it. Thank you, darling.
Thanks, guys.
Is it part of this? Did it take anything in it? Are you sure it's not hurt?
I think it's the first.
Yeah.
You went through it. It goes up easy.
Was that a short answer? Maybe.
Well, it's been catching on. Do you remember? It was good.
Oh, that works.
Lori Linehan.
Yes, I'm Lori.
Appreciate you being here. And if you could give a description of your educational background, your work experience, and your community service.
Sure. I grew up in... I'm sorry?
Don't be nervous.
Oh, I started here, so it's not a good threat. I grew up in Seale, graduated in 1994. Right after that, I got my paralegal certificate from University of Puget Sound. I worked as a paralegal for approximately twenty years. My first employment was with the Prosecute and Attorney's Office in Yakima County. And then I moved to the Tri-Cities. I was the legal secretary for the senior partner of a nine-law, or nine-attorney law firm. And coming back to Yakima when I had my first child, continued working as a paralegal for pretty reputable attorneys in Yakima. We moved here to Golden Dale in 2015. And now I'm a stay-home mom. I've got four kids, Chance, Cannon, Scotty, and Ronika. Twelve to three. So as far as my, the things I've done in the community, I've been on the Little League Board for several years. I'm a co-chair for the Parent Committee for Golden Dale Head Start, policy member of the Mid-Columbia Children's Council. I helped start and manage the Sandlot baseball team, which was a baseball team we had here in town in lieu of Little League this year. It was very successful. And this year, I'm going to be involved in youth football. So I'm kind of all over. With sports, my kids, that's my importance.
Sure, very good. Thank you, thank you. The next questions are ones that the council has picked out that they wanted to ask. What is your vision of our city, for our city, future vision and the community?
I just love Golden Dale. It is a small town. It reminds me of Seale when I was growing up in it. My vision is to keep the old, small-town values. I want this town to be where I raise my kids and where my grandkids come home, see grandma, and all those good things. That's my vision for Golden Dale.
Very good. Thank you. The next one is, what are your two highest priorities or issues that you believe the city needs to address? And how would you propose to address these issues?
My biggest priority is for the youth. I think it's sad that we don't have enough youth activities and things for the kids to keep them active and out of trouble. The old song, "My little children are the future," and I'm a firm believer in that. If they don't have something to do that's good, they'll do something that's bad. And childcare. I think we need to establish childcare so the parents can get a job, so the kids can show their parents, see their parents being successful, and mimic that, so.
And that's coming.
Yes, 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 yes. And how do I propose to make a change? I can't. City council can. And I'm excited to have the opportunity to be here.
Really appreciate that, Bullions, to participate. Now, how would you plan to facilitate or foster economic growth and development in Golden Dale? Kind of like some of the other issues. What do you see that could help with economic growth?
I've seen it firsthand relatively, just two months ago. Sports tournaments. If we had fields and the ability to host tournaments, baseball, soccer, football, anything, the money that would come into the city would be amazing. And then people would leave. So they would come in, they would use our hotels, eat at our restaurants, and then they would go. So our city could stay and maintain small, but we could still get the economic relief that we need.
That's it. Very good. And do you have any questions for the council? Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I want to say to all the members that have been interviewed, if you look at these questions, every one of them is the start of a great conversation, not only on council, but among colleagues, coworkers, wherever you're at. These are great discussion starters with real substance to their outcome. With that, Larry, we're going to be doing ballot votes, or...
Do you want to vote, like, on one position at a time, or...
Yes, you have to vote on one position at a time. Then you have to give the oath of office to that person. And then you start the process over again with the second position. You have options. You can do it by motion, if you think. And do a motion of second and have the rest of the council vote on that.
If we do...
Or we can do a voting process.
If we do, let's say, if we were looking at position five, if we were to make a motion on that one, but we voted on position seven, does that matter? Or does it matter how, do we have to do each position? Do we have to do each position the same way, or can we do it differently?
You can do it differently. Why don't you do it each the same way?
Okay. Well, I would like to make a motion to nominate Dave Jones to position number five. I'll second that.
It's been moved and segmented to appoint Dave Jones to position five in the city council. Any discussion, any questions? Any clarifications from there? If there's no questions, all in favor?
Ayes.
Thanks, Lord. I knew you were on board. You have one council position filled.
Okay, so at this point in time, Dave, if you'll come up and take the oath of office from Connie, and then we'll seat you in Kevin's spot.
Right next to...
Right next to Ellie.
Okay.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, David Jones.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm?
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution?
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws?
And the Constitution and laws?
Of the State of Washington?
Of the State of Washington?
And that I will faithfully and impartially?
And that I will faithfully and impartially?
Perform and discharge the duties?
Perform and discharge the duties?
Of the office of city council member?
Of the office of city council member?
According to law, to the best of my ability.
According to the best, we say?
According to law?
According to law?
To the best of my ability.
And to the best of my abilities. So help me God.
Okay, council votes? Oh.
Aye. So I will make the motion to appoint, I'm back with names, sorry, my apologies. Okay. To appoint Darlene Williamson to position number seven.
Yes, okay. And it's mine?
I'll second that. It's been moved and segmented to appoint Darlene Williamson to city council. Are there any questions or comments or discussion?
This position will last until the election is certified. Is that what...
So that's the river?
Correct. Okay. That's the only comment I needed to make.
Okay. So no questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Do you guys get the vote?
No.
Aye. Nay.
What'd you say, Lauren?
Nay vote.
Two nays and four...
Motion. Motion passes.
The motion passes.
Trying to figure out where we're going to go.
Back there.
Aye, state your name.
Darlene Williamson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution?
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws?
And the Constitution and laws?
Of the State of Washington?
Of the State of Washington?
And that I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially?
Perform and discharge the duties?
Perform and discharge the duties?
Of the office of city council member?
Of the office of city council member?
According to law?
According to law?
To the best of my ability?
There's a great next to our question. It's one of these that while you're doing that.
That concludes all of the makeup posts, right, Larry?
Yes.
Okay.
We are full council.
Well, I think the nicest thing, at least for me personally, was to meet people that haven't known before, but with incredible talent and great energy for their city. And I hope more than anything else, that you'll generate that energy either coming to council, making us, helping us to know what your vision is, because it's very clear and very good and very positive, each one of you. This is a nice experience as far as from a mayor's point of view. It's really good, and we appreciate everybody. Nobody lost. Please keep that in mind and don't get discouraged. This is a super thing for you to be participating in, either from that chair or these chairs.
We had some very good candidates today.
And incredibly good candidates. We're really excited about that. And that's a great sign for Golden Dale. All there is to it. Larry, do you have anything? Or if not, we'll go on to the next item on the agenda.
That would be mine.
The next item is a report of officers and the city administrator. We'll begin with Larry.
Okay, I'll just record on the 2021 Community Day's scheduled events. And there are a few, more than we had last year, but a little less than we had years prior to that. But we'll start on with the Cruz Inn. But we'll start on, with the Cruisin' on Friday, July 9th, at Goldendale Schwab. And that is organized, I don't know who it's organized by, but. GMA.
GMA.
That's GMA. GMA, Goldendale Motorsports Association. And then the show, that, that will be followed up by Saturday's events, the Show and Shine Car Show from nine to four. The Community Days Parade will start registering and lining up at nine thirty in the morning on Saturday, and the parade will start at eleven AM. We have a children's chalk walk on East Main Street from ten to four. And I should say that the Show and Shine is going to be on the first, the hundred, one hundred block and two hundred block of West Main Street, including Grand Street, south of Main Street and north of Main Street. So there'll be, they expect to have quite a few Show and Shine cars at the car show. A lot of activities going on at that spot. This year, we've kind of added a east one hundred block of Main Street, food trucks and vendors. So we're not having anything at the courthouse lawn, primarily due to the fact that.
It's a mess.
Yeah. There's a lot of activity, a lot of construction activity there, and we wanted to kind of all group it together and have all of Main Street included. So we did it that way. Food trucks and vendors will be from nine to four on East Main Street. There's going to be a quilt show. We had those in the past. And that'll be at the Presby, Presby Museum, as well as some entertainment. At least from what I've heard, there's entertainment on East Main by Lem Pratt. Hot Rods is going to have some entertainment, and the Cowgirl Restaurant is going to have some entertainment. So go and enjoy.
Yes.
So this is Lauren. I think council direction was for entertainment downtown on Main Street there with Beer Garden to support the Junior Chamber. Is that still happening?
No, it's not. We, we're not able to get that all arranged. Junior Chamber was making those arrangements, and we couldn't. We didn't have enough money for entertainment, and then the Beer Garden wasn't going to work out either. So we attempted those, but in the end, we weren't able to make that happen.
Well, disappointed to hear. Can we have Junior Chamber report on that at our next council meeting to see how we can support them in the future to make that happen?
Sure.
Now, find out what went south this year. I think everyone's really eager to get together and, and have an event like that after the last year and a half, and it's frustrating to hear about it now rather than earlier than this point, to get, to councilor and Lauren to see those events happen.
Yeah, a lot of it had to do with the construction.
Okay, it'd be good to hear more about that.
Thank you, Lauren. Anything else, Larry?
No.
Yes, you have a question? I'm sorry.
May I add something to the Community Days, or no?
Can we go up there and just?
That's not on the flyer.
Speak.
Uh, yeah, but come up here so everybody can see you. That's all.
We did not, we were not able to get it on the flyer in time, but we're having a children's activity center put on by Goldendale Creative Co-op. We're going to have bounce houses, a cooled-down water play area, carnival games, crafts, and there will be children vendors.
That's terrific for kids.
Just a lad, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
Wait, wait, that can be downtown?
It will be in the general store parking lot next to Soul to Soul. Thank you.
Now, we'll go to council, and I don't, I'm not expecting any of you to have anything you want to talk about tonight. You've just gone through an interview process that was hopefully thorough. And, but I will ask, starting with Andy, our mayor for town, things that you want to raise.
I just want to welcome Darlene and Dave, and of course Ellie again, to City Council. And we're doing work with you guys. That's all I got.
It's great to be a crowd again. Phil?
Yes, welcome, Darlene and Dave. I see you guys around town. Never actually met you so, it'd be nice working with you guys. Also want to extend my thanks to our other applicants, Theon and Lori. Thank you for coming out and going through that process of standing in front of everybody, answering questions. And the information you brought and your concerns, are, are, how do I say this? Well, they, they coincide with most of us, so I invite you guys to continue being involved. And look forward to seeing your guys' names on the ballots the next time around for those positions. So yeah, just keep at it, and I hope that you're willing to be involved continuously, because we, you know, like, like Theon said, we do need that fresh energy, and that would be very welcome. Unfortunately, we'll have to wait until the next ballot to, to see some new names, but that would be great. And then again, thank you to law enforcement and of course fire for what everything has been done this last week. Apparently has been very impactful, and yes, I think the, the training and everything that we spend in our first responders is, we see payoffs. We often don't have events of that magnitude that could potentially go bad. We've seen, this one, we've seen one a couple weeks, a month ago, you know, running through the high school, that are starting to be, we see big city problems in a small, a small town, and I think, you know, all the training that they spend, everything that they do is to be ready is exactly what we need, we need them for, is just be ready, be able to respond in such a great way. So, thank you. And, and then I'll also extend thank you to the community. Like Chief Noah said, you know, the fire department had fire trucks going around town. I was in one of those fire trucks, and I did notice so much, so many water hoses and buckets of water this year compared to the other years that I've been out, where, you know, people were doing fireworks in the safest possible way that they could. You know, I know it, it was one of those things where we were all fearing for, for a fire, in worst-case scenario, but I think those that came out and did the fireworks did it in such a responsible way, like they said. There, there's so much water on the street, you know, as we're driving by, it was just nice to see. So thank you to everybody that participated in that.
Thank you, Phil. Hi.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I want to make a quick comment. Last week, I invited the director of the Veterans Fair to come down to visit Goldendale. We had a good tour at the Stone Hens Memorial, and after that, we had lunch at the American Legion, and the opportunity for the director to talk to the veterans of Clicked Out County. And then after that, then we went up to the observatory, and we had a tour of the observatory. She was very pleased, I think, of the whole day and how it went and everything, so again, they're just, we're trying to promote Goldendale.
That's good.
Anyway, then one other quick thing, Larry, then airport, what's anything new?
We're still waiting on the, the tank to be constructed and to be delivered to the site.
Okay.
It's been on order.
Yeah.
And it just takes twelve to sixteen weeks, and we're in that waiting period.
Yeah.
So things are moving along as well as we can expect it right now.
Great. Anyway, that's all I have.
Okay.
Just welcome to our members.
Thank you. Dave, anything you'd like to bring up or?
Oh, I carried on long enough before.
Thank you.
I hope Dave, I'm good.
I don't know whether Darlene ever does this.
I know, right?
We're really excited.
I'll take a sound.
Really, it's going to be fun for the council, all the way around.
We got Lauren.
Pardon? Lauren. Oh, sorry, Lauren, you ought to have been in the room. Are you there?
I don't, what's his phone number? I don't see him on there anymore.
They say it was a few minutes.
Huh, no, he's not on. Who is that?
Hello, hello, hello.
Hello, you're echoing.
I'm not sure why that is happening, but can you hear me now?
Yes.
The reason I'm calling, I'm, I'd like to file a complaint. Do you hear me?
We're not at public comment yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just stay on the line. It'll be just a second. If we find.
Before you move on.
No, I was waiting for Lauren, but what?
Lauren's not on here.
Okay.
Our code says that we can only have a council meeting for two hours. If we go past the two-hour level, we're supposed to get a motion to extend it for another half an hour, in half-hour increments.
I'll take that motion.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to extend the length of City Council for this night for an extra thirty minutes. All in favor? Please say aye.
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 Okay.
Now, let's go to public comment.
Okay, you can talk now.
Yeah, Ken McQ in 519 East Broadway Street. I need to tell you my feelings about the city condoning the Kiwanis selling fireworks every year. I hate to say it, but this year, I was bombarded for five straight hours with mortar, mortar shots. My neighbors had six mortars set up. So I had to sit here for five hours, explosion after explosion with the fire, the remnants of the fireworks filtering down onto my personal property, and red-hot pieces of paper flying through the air. I don't know what you, I doubt if you want to do anything about it, because you've been allowing it for so many years, and oh, I know, it's, it's unpaid, unpaid, to shoot off, to not, to not shoot off fireworks, I guess, maybe not. But I doubt if our founding fathers had any idea that every Tom, Dick, and Harry could go out and buy fireworks and explode them on the Fourth of July. I think if the city is going to want fireworks set in specific areas for it to happen, but they haven't allowed in just somebody's neighborhood, you don't know who you're to interrupt, disturbing, disturbing. And now I've got an hearing from all the oceans. So I don't appreciate the city, the council, allowing the Kiwanis to sell fireworks every year when you didn't even discuss it. You just rubber-staffed it. In a year when we're high drought, and sure, maybe, you know, there was no major fires around here, but I personally got damaged from it. And now there's, the, the craps laying all over my, 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 my property. You still there?
Yes. Yeah, we're here, Ken.
Yeah, okay. So, you know, I know this is falling on deaf ears. It's going to happen again and again and again. But if you could control it a little bit more, I'd sure appreciate it, because I, it's a filthy, expensive, filthy activity that, you know, it doesn't take much IQ to, to get a big thrill out of, about what is it, a second and a half sparkle from a fireworks? And then the aftermath is filthy, and the smoke was so thick, I could hardly read. So remember that next year. I think you're going to see me next year. I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to be there when you're ready to okay that fireworks stuff down. You know, you guys don't need to sell fireworks around here. They'd get them somewhere else. They're going to bring them in anyway. But why should you condone it?
Appreciate your comments, Ken, and we'll take it into account.
Yeah, yeah, sure, Mayor. I know, I know how that works. You bet. Good night.
Public rudeness, public comments.
Kevin has his hand up. Go ahead, Kevin.
Hello, everybody. Good to see you guys again. I just wanted to piggyback on what the last guy said. I know I have a two-story that overlooks the city, and I spend every July and Fourth looking out, enjoying a beer from my bedroom window, and watching all the fireworks in downtown. I don't need to go to Disneyland. I don't need to go to the beach. I just need to look at our beautiful city and see what everybody's doing. You all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. I hope people recognize the incredible cooperation and effort citizens of Goldendale made in April as a safe holiday. It was outstanding, and it's deeply appreciated. That's my public comment. Probably not a loud one. Anyone else for public comment?
It's not Kiwanis that sells.
Lions.
It's not Kiwanis that sells fireworks.
Not Kiwanis.
Not, not the Kiwanis that sells the fireworks.
No, I didn't think so either.
Lions.
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 They can.
That's about it. Is there somewhere else?
Yes, I, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Yes, this is Jeremy Bowen. I just, I'm at 510 South Chatfield, but I want to give you guys thanks for all the fireworks and allowing them, and it was a great show. And I also want to compliment the town on the cleanup that most people did all throughout the town, and especially the Goldendale Community Sports Program. They cleaned up most of the, the whole entire mess at the park. They didn't require much from public works this year, so just a thanks.
Thank you. That's excellent. Anyone else for public comment? See anything, Connie?
Nope, no hands are up, nothing.
Okay, there's nothing else? I made several comments, so I think I'm done with my comments. People tackle this and be.
Well, they were good comments, Mayor.
But do we have a motion to adjourn, City Council?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. You got that. Moved and seconded, and we appreciate all of you, the efforts you've made, the talents you bring to the council. It's really great. We really appreciate it. And appreciate those that were part of the process as well. This is a really good night to make new friends and find early new great talents. That will close the council vote. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I got a soft ass in you guys. You guys are awesome.